You should also have a new, this, this one was a new link, so if you feel more comfortable with the other devices, you can also try it on the new link, it's seeming to work out better for some.
Well, let me, if I'm already logged into my, on that, I don't know.
Um, I've never tried that, but I've seen other people logged on on two devices before, so I'm assuming they're using this.
If you use your phone, you should be able to do both, Andy, it'll ask you. Just make sure you turn down the volume on your, um, on your iPad.
Yeah, um, it's still not letting me.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim, John.
All right, Jim, you, you can hear me?
Again.
All right, so Artie Santos called, did he get a link too, a new link?
Jim, do you want me to forward that link to Joanne Keegan again?
I saw you already did, right?
That was the old one.
I sent her one too, but if you want to, sure.
Okay.
And everyone else is on that last LSAA? Jim, are they on that too then?
I didn't send it out to every, um, member this time, I don't know.
So what about Artie, do you have one for Artie?
I did, I'll send it to him.
Okay, thank you.
Here's Jackie.
All right, Robyn's on, Jackie's on. LTC is on.
Here's Andy.
Are we only gonna get six on this now? Joanne's on, hello, Joanne.
I don't think we're muted.
No, we can hear you.
Unmute.
Where's your mouse, Joanne? You what?
Joanne's muted.
You're muted.
Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted now.
I'll set it, Andy.
Okay, oh, I'm unmuted.
Okay, and don't freeze, Joanne, when we're talking, we can see things moving behind you, so you can't pretend you froze.
Oh wait, I don't see him here yet.
Bob Ho is not there yet. All right, there's Joanne.
Okay.
Did you say you're out there, Bob, somewhere?
I just don't see his name on there. It could be more though. I can make it, do you want this view or another view?
How about one more? With smaller prices.
Put that way.
Yes, so LTC is live now, uh, just, uh, to let you guys know that.
So you can do it that way, and then the speaker goes right there.
All right, we can do it.
Yeah. Or you can do it gallery view, like this, but you don't get everybody, the other way you can.
So, um, did the, um, link go to Kathy Cullen, she said she didn't get it?
Jim, you're in charge of linkage, did it go to Kathy Cullen?
I'm not sure, I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't look like it went to her, or me, or Lisa Golden, their, but their, their first link didn't work either. Now, do you think it was everyone that didn't have a, um, uh, school email, didn't, the link didn't work, because it seems like it was Board of Health members that didn't, it didn't work for? Or you just didn't, or you just didn't want us part of the meeting?
Mine didn't work either, Joanne.
Mine didn't.
Mine didn't work either.
Okay, good, no conspiracy theories.
No conspiracy theories.
We got enough of those.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we don't have to start us.
Exactly.
In the piano.
I can.
Yes.
Lynn, if you wanna see, you can just scroll down.
So we're waiting for more Board of Health members then, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay.
Is Dr. Galvin coming?
Is Dr. Galvin coming tonight?
I thought he was, I just texted him to see if he was having trouble.
And do we know if Hillary and Bob were planning on coming?
I thought they were, I thought I heard Bob, but I'm not sure, and who else did you say?
Hillary.
Oh, okay.
Bob, I know, is trying to access it, I'll try to get it out to, I'll check with Hillary.
Now, who is in the office today? Down at Central?
I was.
Were you able to get in?
It was difficult.
You can thank me for that.
There were a lot of toys being handed out today.
Yes, there were. We had to back up all the way down Merrimack Street, I was dying.
Jim, Kathy says she's begging to be let in.
All right.
I don't know why.
Here she is.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. How you doing, Con?
Doing well, how are you, Kath?
Good, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, kid.
Okay, apparently Lisa's on too.
Yep, there's Lisa.
Mary, you can call me Kappa.
All right. I will, Cap.
I mean, my thing says Queen Anna, and I can't get it to change despite what I do, so. I suppose it's better than that.
It's a term of endearment, Kappa.
I know. Only the prized few get to call me Kappa.
Hey back, Miss Sharon.
Hello, it's Jim, can you hear me?
For those of us who lived through the war.
I want to put it on speaker, all right?
No, you have to behave, stop.
All right, I have Ms. Clark on the phone.
I'm trying to reach Dr. Galvin, but. He's not answering.
Ms. Clark, could you hear Ms. Keegan there?
Yes, I can hear Ms. Keegan, thanks.
All right, great. And we have Mr. Hoey too.
So, I mean, we, we'd be willing to start with Dr. Galvin, it's up to you guys.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have the whole committee outside of, um, on now as well.
Okay, now that we're unmuted. All right, um. All right, so why don't we? All right, so we're gonna start with the salute to the flag. We have a flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Artie?
Here.
Mr. Hoey? Mr. Hoey? Mary Leahy?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Ms. Clark?
And Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Six present, one absent.
Okay, so, uh, we gotta do new business discussion and consideration establishing health metrics, thresholds, and other benchmarks for when schools can be returned back in-person learning. Uh, and update on the low's COVID cases, so I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have one speaker on the topic, but I don't see Mr. George's, uh, logged on yet. I'll, uh, I'll update you, Mr. Mayor, if I see him logged on, or Mr. Dr. Hall, if you could look out for Mr. George's in your waiting room. Uh, so absent the speaker, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, uh, Dr. Hall has a presentation, uh, to share, which is just to update everybody on the current cases. Uh, the school committee engaged in the same presentation last week, so we'll keep it very brief, but just to set the context for the public that's viewing. And then this meeting was set up in response to the motion of the, uh, Board of Health. Uh, so as an open discussion with the school committee and between the committee and the Board of Health, uh, after the presentation, if that works for you, Mayor.
That's good.
Dr. Hall?
Sure, um, good evening, everyone, as you can see, um, from these numbers, the numbers have continued, uh, to rise, and pink, we have everything, uh, over ten. And as you can see too, on, uh, December seventeenth, the percent positivity rate, uh, went up to twelve point three, with the average daily incident rate per a hundred thousand at a hundred, uh, and thirty-four point four, which has shown an increase, um, for over, I believe, ten weeks straight. Here are the, uh, numbers that we're experiencing in regards to quarantining and positives, uh, that we reported to Dessie, uh, as I indicated at the public meeting. I think the quarantine numbers are representative of how aggressive we are in, uh, following guidelines and quarantining, uh, people when there is a doubt. Um, so I, but we have been doing a great job on that, in my opinion, Ms. Busskey and Grothian are, uh, working that on a daily basis. Uh, non-stop to make sure that we answer those calls and make sure people are quarantined, uh, when there's an issue, so I, I think this represents that we're following standards, uh, with an abundance of safety, but with that being said. Uh, you can also see that the, uh, positives have gone up, uh, of those working in the schools amongst staff and students, and now for a total of seventy-four. Um, we also, uh, broke these, uh, out per school, uh, to provide more detail, uh, we don't have the numbers of people in the schools yet, as requested, married up with them, but this does show. Uh, how many incidences have been in each of our schools. As you can see, there's been a total of thirty. As you can see, there's been a total of 30 students and 24 staff. We do believe there's less than two that have been transferred within the school. And the one that I can definitively think of happened within the first week or two. With that, Mayor, that's all I have on the data.
All right, thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yep.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this discussion here was in relation to the return to school. Currently, the school committee has a January 4th calendar date for a return from the holiday break. Where the Board of Health, we're at 100% remote, starting as of today officially within Lowell Public Schools. I did notify our school staff on Friday that I would be providing them an update prior to the winter recess, which begins at the conclusion of the school day on Wednesday, with an update as to how we're viewing this data in a return to in-person instruction. For the Board of Health, a return from the holiday break to school does not necessarily mean a return to in-person instruction. The January 4th is our first school day. Today was a school day, for instance, but it's 100% remote. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna shift to listening mode, and I believe this, this meeting, I believe Ms. Keegan was requested by the Board of Health to discuss the very metrics in relation to in-person learning, and the school committee was very interested in engaging in that conversation.
Thank you. Yes, there was a motion at our last meeting made by Kathleen, I believe, to engage in another conversation with the school committee about the current 3% that was in school and, and future plans. And part of that was prompted by the fact that we were getting letters from teachers, staff, saying they had concerns about being in school, given the numbers that they were obviously following. And obviously, the case rates in Lowell have skyrocketed. It's the Lowell case rate last reported last week by DPH is 134 now. Lowell is the, the second, the city with the second highest case rate in the state, only second to Lawrence. Niantucket has a skewed case rate of 184 because of what they go by their permanent population, year-round population. But other than that, the Lowell case rate is only the second, is the second highest in the state with an infection rate, which is the second metric, of 12.3. And I think we talked about before that COVID fire is considered 10 and over. And so, you know, and, and we know that CDC says that there's a higher risk of transmission in schools when the community has an infection rate over 10 or a case rate over 50. So unfortunately, our, our metrics are very high right now. And so based on that and the letters we were receiving from teachers, we requested another conversation. And so part of that conversation is, is kind of mute right now because you've gone to fully remote. And so the need to address those concerns of the folks that were in person and, and, you know, i- is not critical right now to this day. But I will say that they, they did raise concerns about needs and needs that they had in terms of around students not being able or willing, through no fault of their own, of keeping their masks on and, and, and social distancing and, and some of the, some of the things that remediation, that we, we, the mitigation steps that we'd like to see happen are not always possible in, in that student population. And so that's, you know, another conversation that it's what prompted our, our, the, I believe, and Kathleen can speak for herself. I believe it's what prompted our asking for another conversation, is those letters that we were receiving from staff. In terms of, you know, the metrics, I, I think I pretty much, you know, what happens in the community happens in the school. When you see cases skyrocketing in your community, you're gonna see, like, it's not surprising that you saw, you saw a pretty sizable jump in the number of students and staff in your schools with COVID, because that's what's happening in the community. And so, so you've seen that jump among students and staff, even with this very small number that you do have in person. And, you know, I think that's also important to note. And, and so there's some things we can control, and I, and I think Lowell has done a great job in terms of mitigation and implementing the correct use of masks and social distancing and hand washing and cleaning of the schools. The other thing that helps is contact tracing, and frankly, the community is overloaded right now in terms of contact tracing. That's what helps to control the virus in the community. And we're overloaded in, in the community in terms of getting people quickly into isolation and quarantine because people frankly aren't called the same day that they're, that they're, that they're diagnosed, because there's a backlog. The state has just trained and hired 300 additional contact tracers. Many of the Lowell cases get sent to the state for contact tracing, because we have three public health nurses in Lowell, and we have assistants with the school nurses. But, you know, that's a mitigation measure that I don't think is currently working that great. But, but that's not something we can control right now. So I think it's not, it, it's an overloaded system right now. So I think it's not unexpected that you're seeing, even with the mitigation measures that you can control. I think it's not unexpected that you're seeing cases in schools. And the other thing I would just like to say is that when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says that they're not seeing transmission occurring in schools, I would have to say that nobody is really monitoring that, that there aren't being in-depth interviews, that many people do not know where they got their, where the virus was, where they got infected with the virus. And it's a very difficult thing to track that, and I don't believe that's being tracked in any, in any really truly effective manner. So I, I just sort of, I'm editorializing a little about things that people claim that really, you know, I mean, we've had people say that they tried to call Dessie and report transmission in schools, and they said they don't track that. So you know, I, I think that we've talked, we talked about last time about the fact that we don't think schools are, you know, super spreaders. And I think that's true when you use those mitigation measures. But when, and, and I think that there are schools in this commu, in this state that should be having some in-person learning. Unfortunately, the case rate is so high in Lowell right now that I just don't think Lowell is, is one of them. And you're probably saying, well, when, how can we get these kids back to school? What do we need to get them back in school? And I just think you need to see something like some decrease, some that the metrics going in, in the right direction in some fashion. And we're just not seeing that. They're going in the opposite direction. We also don't have any testing, unfortunately, in this state and in this country, in any meaningful way in our school system. Any, you know, rapid testing or any way to, if we, if we went back to school and we saw cases, any way to quickly remove those folks that are positive? I mean, you know, of course, my ideal world is people get tested on the way into school in the morning. But obviously, that's not gonna happen. I just think that there are things that, you know, we can all wish for in the public health world. But that's pretty much the picture. If, if any, if, if it's okay, if there's any, you know, if Kathleen or anyone else has anything that they'd like to add that I've forgotten that, or if I misportrayed Kathleen's motion, that was what was happening, was in our packet last month, all the letters from, from folks that were still in person, who believed that they would not be still in person, given the, the current case rates and the, and the reports of, of students and staff with COVID each week increasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the Board of Health?
So this is Kathleen. Yeah, Joanne, I think you covered pretty much everything. There was another concern that some of the letters were reporting that people were working very closely physically with, with students who were unable, due through no fault of their own, to keep their mask intact, but it was also wet, and they were coughing, and they had no eye protection or face protection other than just a regular mask. So that mitigation strategy was not in place, and we're highly concerned about that as well. That was just one thing. But everything else, I think you hit everything, Joanne. Thank you.
I would just, I'm sorry. I would just add that, you know, there's no, there's no state or national data-driven directive for, for, for us to follow. You know, the, the, there's, there's no number that says this is when kids can go back to school. Unfortunately, what's happening in our community right now will happen in your schools when you go back. And we just have to, you know, at some point, make that decision about starting back like we did slowly last time. Unfortunately, we never got to the point to be able to increase those numbers. That's all.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like Mr. George has logged on, if you wanted to take the speaker, or if we wanted to go right to committee members.
Yeah, we'll do the speaker first, and then we'll go to committee members. If you're there, Paul?
Yes, yes. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul George, President of the United Chiefs of Lowell. You know, it's kind of ironic that this, right now, this meeting is being conducted at a distance. It, it's a remote meeting. Why? Because it's safer. It just simply makes sense, because it's considerably safer. And take into consideration, I believe the CDC, oh, just in the last day or so, has indicated that they thought that they would move the teachers up, teachers across the country up with the public health, oh, excuse me, public safety employees, including firearm police. Only after, and, and the only ones ahead of them would be the public health people, the doctors and nurses that are trying to heal people from the, from the pandemic and from the coronavirus. It just seems to me that yet we expect teachers and paraprofessionals to be in front of those students. Those students, like, those teachers had a choice at one time about going remote or being face-to-face. And they chose face-to-face because they believed what they had heard again and again. We did a survey of our own members, who remember it clearly. If we went three weeks in a row, after three weeks, we would go remote. What ended up happening eight weeks ago was we had gone three weeks in a row, and then the decision was made, well, just the 500 neediest students will continue to be educated face-to-face. There was a letter sent by the Board of Health to the superintendent at that time, saying, a threshold has been exceeded. What is your plan to go 100% remote? The response coming from the superintendent was, we're going remote, however, not 100%. 500 neediest students will remain in school. And that's when the, the matrix for contagion or, or, or infection was a lot lower than it is now. It's progressively increasing. The teachers, when they decided to do this, and teachers in Paris, when they decided to do this and teach face-to-face, the, the rate of, of infection was just over 1%. Right now, it's over 12%. It's obviously clearly different, much different. And many of those, I think, of those teachers and those paraprofessionals and others that work with these students are saying, how bad does it have to be before we go remote? Now, I appreciate the fact we are remote three days this week. But it doesn't seem as though it's gonna change that much that radically in the short, in a short period of time. If we're looking at a trend for three weeks, the only thing I'm concerned about is it's over 12% infection rate. If it becomes 9%, is that significantly different than all of a sudden, we put people back in there again? Where in most cases, they're looking at 3% to 4% or, or less in order to bring people back? And is it prudent to do it now, considering CDC has pushed up, and we'll assume Massachusetts will push up the inoculation to teachers, to educators, and, and adults much sooner? Another question that I had, it was at a meeting of September 2nd. I think that's one of the times when I had spoken with the Board of Health. There was a report on the, dated August 27th, that there had been inspections done to the building, primarily of the freshman academy, but also expanded beyond that to all the other buildings, the 30 buildings that make up the complexes for, for schools. At that point, that, that, that document indicated that about half of the roof ventilation systems were not functioning. And it's, did say there would be a report coming subsequent to that report as things were, were met. Now, I haven't seen any report in subsequent meetings, or if you've been notified. But some of the considerations for expansion beyond even the 25% was to use interior rooms. I, I would just seem to me that it would be a priority for the Board of Health, or should be, that make sure that there's adequate ventilation in those rooms. They also talk about filters, filters, and so on that should be used. I'm not really sure if they've been, if that's been done yet. Or there's also standard MIRF 13 filters that will actually capture the coronavirus. Those are all things to be considered as we move forward, and we get into a larger, what I'm saying is expanding, if you want to call it opportunities for students. But I've got a concern, I get a number of concerns. We've articulated this. I, I think Keegan has been very, very articulate in explaining what she read and what people shared with them, teachers and Paris shared with them at that time. And we should, I just want to say, that is a great concern to us. What happens over the next, let's say that by February, they stop inoculating teachers? Why rush, push them back in front of students and students to be infected by each other? When you can see the light at the end of the tunnel, it's a heck of a block closer than it had been previously believed to be. So I'm asking for your intervention and the judgment. I think Ms. Keegan was very articulate in indicating, there are no real guidelines, there are no real, but judgment is there. And I put my hands, I would put my future, and I would ask the, the medical experts that comprise the Board of Health to be active in trying to shape the return, because that's what you do. And, and you are the medical experts, you're not the political experts. And politicians can do their own. I'm more concerned about this health and safety, not only of the teachers and Paris I represent, but the students who are also there and could be negatively impacted by a rushback. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And Paul, before you go, all I want to add is too, that if I can even ask this, but you know, I would like to make sure that the union is working collaboratively with the superintendent's office and the committee later this year on what the plan will be for next year. Because next year is not gonna be any easier. We're gonna have a lot of catching up to do. We're gonna have to be smart about how we educate next year. So I hope we.
I would say that I've had some preliminary discussions with the superintendent, not necessarily with the school committee, because the school committee doesn't come to the table on the bargaining. However, part of the proposal, oh, one suggestion I made to the superintendent was to remain in the distance-learning platform and save the money, the revenues that have, that are ordinarily used for transportation, and use that money in order to be able to beef up a summer program that could be used for remedial work. It could be for credit recovery. It could be for a number of activities. It's helpful if you know exactly, if you were to say, okay, we're not gonna remote, we're not gonna go back into the classroom with the students face-to-face until the vaccine has been distributed, then you've got some kind of, a, a pretty good date about that. You can, you can conserve your revenues in order to be able to pay the personnel to offer those enhanced experiences, whether they'd be, you know, whether it be makeup work or would be something for advancement. We're always gonna come up with, with half decent ideas, John, about how best to accommodate kids. You gotta remember, even me, who have been the president of the union for many years, I think if you went back and talked to my colleagues, or you talked to, you know, any one of the others out there that have known me, adult me, it isn't like, I don't, you, my job is just advocating teachers. I'm advocating and teachers or parents, I'm advocating for kids, I'm an educator for us. So. That may be hard for some people to believe, but that's their, that's their problem. It's not mine. So certainly, certainly we can come up with creative ideas. They can represent, I'm just more concerned about avoiding the greater harm that can be created by a rush to move. On these things when we know that that harm could be. That harm could be much more devastating in people's lives than slowing down the track as far as remaining remote. And I will tell you this. I've been very impressed with some of the remote instruction that's out there. Extremely excellent. And, and for those kids, that works well for them too, so.
No, and I know how hard everybody's been working at all the schools and we appreciate that. So all this is in, we're considering everything. So. Safety and then what we're going to do to catch up. You know, how we're going to push kids ahead and get them caught up. So I appreciate that. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions from the committee before the speaker leaves or any comments, questions from the? Committee? I can't see everybody's hands, so just.
Like this. First of all, I, I'd like to, I have several things I'll say. I'll try to be as quick as possible. Number one, to the Board of Health and the Health Department, I appreciate all the work you've done to keep our children safe. Number two, Dr. Boyd, I think you've done a tremendous job on what we told you to do. Jim, this took me 45 minutes to get on Zoom. It's the first time I'm a little upset with you, but I'll, I'll, I'll forgive you, Jim. But to speak to Paul, I taught the several teachers and that I, I always respected and I go to them for information. And they always told me the 3% that we, Dr. Boyd, the way the, the way the union leader just said it. It was the school committee. We wanted that 3%. Because the staff members that I talked to told me that that 3% was safer inside our schools. And I wanted to make sure I, I drive that home. There's another point when it came to. Desi in the Department of Health, I thought they were offering free testing last time we met. I felt that we were told it wasn't a fit for Lowell. And it kind of, I thought it made. Mr. Hall look bad and it's just me thinking that way. Another, another thing is when we talk about children with a mask on and it's all wet, the PPEs you're talking about. I just seen something tonight that we're number five in the country on what we spent on PPEs. And there was just one thing that stuck out to me, the mask. We were, the company was making these certain masks, nice masks of 50 cents a piece and they were charging us $11.50. So things like that drive me crazy when I see it. Because if they, if we weren't getting ripped off by some vendors, we would probably be able to buy PPEs, not only for our staff, real good ones. But maybe even for teachers. But I want to thank the Board of Health again. I don't have all your names. I'm sorry, Ms. Keegan, Ms. Luda. And everybody else involved. Thank you so much. And I think we've never faulted. I think the city, the school committee and everybody. Keeping them safe. That 3% always bothers me. It's going to bother me for the rest of my life. Because the staff tells me they're safer in school, Mr. Hall. Thank you for the time, man.
Okay, any other committee, committee members, Ms. Martin?
Uh, no, I just say. You know, I, I think the numbers, you know, they're just incredibly sobering and I think that they are giving us a real picture of what. Our community is facing right now. So I think the decision that the superintendent. Had shared with us to, to go full remote for those remaining students was the right one. So I'm, I'm glad that we put that in place and we're able to. Go full remote for all those students. You know, I share the concerns because these are our most. In many ways needy, students educationally speaking. So we, we really do have a, a responsibility in terms of their education, but I, you know, I agree that. The circumstances it is right now, it's, it's simply, it's not safe. We're not able to be able to bring staff or students back in. But I think the real conversation needs to be about kind of trying to project out and decide. You know, kind of set a target at least right now. That we can start working towards. And if that's beginning of February. You know, if we make that choice so that we can at least. Have, you know, push it down, push it forward a little bit, so that we have that time to reevaluate. I think that might be helpful because I do think January, we're going to see, we're going to see an additional spike after the holidays again. And that's one of my biggest concerns right now. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with everything that my colleague just said and with the, what. Joanne had to say in the Board of Health people. I think maybe it might behoove the school department to maybe try to find some way to educate the community. Not that, not that there hasn't been a, a thrust in that direction. From other places, but I think we, we should really try to convince our population in the city. That you have to wear the mask and you have to do all of these things that we're saying, wash your hands and do all of that, all of these things that are going to. Help us with these, bring these numbers down. Because it really doesn't make any sense for us to put anyone in jeopardy, kids, staff and, or anyone else. I, I, I think we need to be very, very cautious. I certainly personally don't want to have any of my colleagues that, that I had in school. Come under, under, under a, a, a cloud like that and, and come out on the other side. In really bad shape. I, I would not be able to support that. And I, and I, going forward, we're, we're going to have to be very cautious. Those numbers have got to come down first. For sure. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
My question to the Board of Health, I'm, I'm curious whether there are any. Plans for additional testing within Lowell. And or specific pilot programs. To our schools. So my understanding was there was a, there was a program or there's a program that if we're in-person learners. That, that was maybe being offered and maybe we didn't quite qualify or we would have qualified if we were in person, but now, of course, we're in a remote status. I'm just wondering what, what is, looking forward, are there some additional testing opportunities for our city to be involved in, whether it's to the school or otherwise? Thank you.
You know, whoever wants to answer that.
So maybe, um, Joanne Belanger can to speak to the current testing that's going on between Colley and the cinema and any opportunities for any other student testing.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Hi, good evening. So in terms of the testing in the city, we do have the two sites that are set up. The Cataldo ambulance services at the cinema, they'll be there through the end of the month. On the Colley site, that is the Trinity site. We had set those up only for the, the three Thursdays. We did have to cancel it last Thursday, obviously with the snow. It's been rescheduled to the 29th. So both of those are by appointment and both of those are below residents only. They're only till the end of the month because we are using the CARES Act money to fund that. We didn't get any state support. For additional testing like we did with the stop the spread testing that we had earlier. In the, the summer into the middle of September. When those, when that program, when the state decided that we were doing well, we were still in the green. And they just continued it here in Lowell. You know, we have advocated left, right and center to get something state funded back. And that didn't happen. So this is what we have for right now of protesting. And again, that, that, you know, will unfortunately end at the, at the end of the year. If there's more, if, you know, I've heard that there may be money coming, the CARES Act may be extended. So there's, you know, there's hope there, but we, we have to regroup at this point and, you know, we're moving. Again, more towards what's coming up with the vaccine and getting ready to do vaccination clinic with the COVID vaccine as it comes out.
Can I answer your question, Hillary?
I know it's not a good answer, but.
You answer that?
I guess, by all the other things, I understand that we're looking forward to the vaccine, but certainly, you have, as was discussed earlier, you know. There, we're thinking that this is going to continue to go in the wrong direction, you know, into January after the holidays. Are there, are there discussions going on? I know you think it's at the state level, but are there discussions at, at the city level to prioritize? Continuing some testing on sites within the city even beyond the end of this month?
So I, I think I've heard everything. In terms of the continuation of the testing, you know. You know, unfortunately, that's a depend on funding and, you know, the, the fiscal piece of all of that. And, you know, it isn't something that obviously is totally off the table. We, we, you know, know the value of testing. You know, especially through stop the spread and everything that we, you know, the, the large amounts of residents that we did get tested, we know that there, it, it is of. Great value in terms of trying to keep the community safe, trying to gauge where we are in the community. But there, you know, it's, it's, it does have that financial piece to it, you know, the test stuff comes from somewhere and it has to be paid for. So. Obviously, it is something that, you know, the city manager has on her plate in terms of how do we continue this going forward? How could we fund it? And again, advocating to on the state level, though the expanded stop the spread sites are continuing. Through a project called Project Beacon. And I know that those are continuing through January, so there is still testing available around, around the state and, and in. Somewhat close enough, you know, you can look on the. The DPH website and get the locales. I mean, there's the Lawrence, the Mathewin, Pittsburgh, Framingham, it's around. So there is still free testing. But we will continue to keep, getting to bring one of those testing sites back to the city. And see if we can get something going there. And that's, you know, at, at this point, that's all I have for that. Unfortunately, we can use the help, the advocacy, sure.
Hey, a quick question to Ms. Belanger.
Sure, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Dillon. Go ahead.
Ms. Belanger, I'm pretty sure the last time we met, you told, you told me, told the whole. We want a good fit for some type of free testing. That's the. I got that question from Bob Gignac that stays involved in the schools. I think you said it wasn't a good fit for our system because we didn't have the right amount of numbers. Would you just elaborate on that a little bit for me?
Sure, sure. Yeah, it is, you know, partly based on the fact that it is a small percentage of the school population that's there. But it's also a, a population that is, you know, as, as you well know, is our most vulnerable, our most needy. And is a very difficult. Population, if you will, to withstand and sustain that type of testing. If anybody's gone through it, you know, you have to get, you know, a Q-tip looking device, put up your nose. You have to stay still. You have to be able to blow your nose first, you know, to clean out the nasal passages and. It has to be in place for 15 seconds on each side. So there is, you know, part of the testing protocol that would be very difficult. For the majority of the students that are in this population right now, very traumatic for a lot of them. And that was the basis of saying. In terms of the population that's in the school system right now, that it, it probably, it didn't look like a good fit in terms of getting good results. And, and not putting children through a traumatic episode to get them tested. Going forward, I, you know, I had said, obviously, if there's, you know, the, the population comes back with. More children, then, then it would be, you know, it could be very, very useful, but with this population in place right now, that was the basis of that. That decision.
Answer that, Bob? Yeah, Mr. Dillon, any questions?
Yeah, I, I mean. I, I don't know where to go from here. I think everybody knows I want to be back in person. You know, we're sitting here in, you know, almost coming up on the end of the year and our numbers are through the roof. And of course, the UTL is complaining about that and. You know, I look back to September when they didn't want to, you know, they, they didn't want to go in the building back then. And the numbers were down at 1% or zero. And at that point, they decided to use, you know, 30 years of a lack of maintenance. As leverage to make sure that we stayed remote. So dragged that all the way through the fall and now we haven't been in person at all, really. Throughout this whole, you know, whole school year. And, you know, towns like Chumster and Drake it, Chumster's numbers are way up too. They're. You, you know, 7.37, Drake it's at 13.21. They're still in the building. There's, their entire staff is going into the building because they're in a hybrid model. And their kids are going two days a week. Which has been going on since, since September. I haven't heard talks of them closing. The private schools are still in session. You know, some have made adjustments, but they're still going back. So again, we're not, you know, it's Lowell, it's Lawrence, it's, you know. We're not serving poorest kids in this, in this city. That's what it comes down to. The, the, all the gaps that we want to talk about when COVID isn't a thing are getting bigger right now. They're getting bigger. If you have money, it's very clear that you can get an, an, an education right now, good education. And, and otherwise you're, you're going to be remote. And, you know, I think it is ironic that we're meeting on, on Zoom. I've been advocating to meet every chance we can get in person. So I agree with you there on that, Paul. But, you know, the other thing that's funny is every time we have a Zoom meeting. You know, like we started 20 minutes later. You know, we, we can't, we can't do, you know, our meetings. And, and have the same type of discussion and do them correctly through Zoom. So, you know, the, the, the UTL keeps advocating on how good remote learning is doing and how good role learning is doing. Give me a break. You're not helping the poorest kids in the city. That's the bottom line. You know. This is a, you know, this, this virus has a 99 plus. You know, recovery rate. And, you know, we, we waited all the way until we're, basically until there's a vaccine before we send our kids back. In the future. What sort of threshold is there going to be for shutting our schools down permanently? You know, I mean, a bad flu season? Is that going to, you know, allow us to, to close our schools down? Like, you know, where, where is the threshold in the future? That, that, that's a serious question. I, I, I'd love somebody to give me the answer to that. And, you know, we, we, we're just, we're continuing to fail our kids here. Continuing to fail them. That's all I got. I know this is a terrible time. I know the numbers are higher right now, but if we were in school and in person since September. It'd be very easy to start making decisions about having, you know, a week or two off after the holidays to let the numbers go down. But, you know, we dragged our feet and we screwed it up from the beginning. So here we are. I do want to thank the, I, I do want to thank the Health Department for, you know, cooperating, having these conversations with us. And, you know, having some reasonable discussion because we've done, we have gotten somewhere. So I'd like to thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Darby.
I think, Your Honor, I just would like to say. This has been difficult from the get out. I, I don't disagree with some of what Mr. Dillon said. Absolutely. There's no denying that the opportunity gap for our poorest children, our non-English speaking children is just growing. And that's why we do have to be looking towards the future and how we are going to be able to help those kids going forward. But for right now, I think I'm, I'm not inclined to point any fingers or have any, and I'm like the queen of 2020. to point any fingers or have any, and I'm like the queen of 2029 site. We did the best we could. We kept those kids in because they were the most needy, but also because their opportunities to access any learning through Zoom or any of that virtual wasn't, it really isn't there for them. Where, you know, you could argue that we're doing a much better job with remote learning, which I believe we are than last spring. And nobody is going to disagree that remote learning is not like in-person learning. It's just not the same. But many of our kids are doing okay with the remote learning. We're doing a better job of it. Our staff are working harder than ever to, you know, provide the learning with this different mode of transportation. It's not helpful for everybody, obviously. So, I think the way we need to move forward is to start to look at, first of all, we've got to be trending in the opposite direction, obviously. And, and I agree with Ms. Martin. I'd like to see some kind of a, a plan. I don't want something etched in stone because it's, it's moving. Like, we should have some rapid testing in place, especially when the community numbers are so high. And I heard very clearly what Ms. Keegan said about the contract tracing being overloaded. That's also a key concern. So, we need to have the numbers trending in the right direction. We need to have some testing mechanism in place for our schools. And you've got Desi, you've got the governor, people breathing down our backs that they want the kids in school, then provide the resources so we can safely do it. Because we have families suffering and like, I agree with what Mr. Hohwe said, some of our kids are way better off in our school buildings, safer, and they're getting some learning than being home. And, but we can't do it without the tools for our staff and what the, without the tools to protect our kids. So, I think we need to figure out the testing thing. I, I would look towards keeping this remote now for a while, until we see some consistent trending down. And in the meantime, working the schools and the city to pressure the state or wherever we need to go to get the resources for testing in place. And I would also look at better, better safety protocols. Because as we mentioned, with these substantially separate classrooms, these children, often through no fault of their own, there's, you've got to be getting closer contact, you know, all those things. So, we need eye guard, eyewear, we need maybe medical, medical level protective equipment, maybe up the ante for those staff that are working with those high needs children. And, so I think there's a number of areas we need to be looking at. And, and that's where, what I would like to do moving forward, to have another meeting after, you know, we're looking at maybe another three weeks of what are the numbers doing? Hang with the remote, because right now, I think this idea of what's happening in the community, we're seeing that, you know, that the, the rise in cases is spreading into the schools too. We've had to quarantine one whole school. So, I, I don't want to go on and on, but I'm really, I, I want us to put our heads together and figure out, because I think that the teachers in those classrooms have been heroes, working with those children and doing it at risk for themselves and their families, because they know those children could not access education any other way. So, they are our most neediest. We need to get them back in, but it's got to be done in a way that makes sense. And I think the testing, better safety protocols, contract tracing that can actually do the follow-up, and the numbers trending down. Those would be the things that I would be looking at. This committee made a commitment, we wanted to keep the kids in school as much as we could safely. We tried to do that. But we have to be remote right now. I think that was the right call. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, anything to follow up with?
I see Mr. Dakota, looks like he's raising his hand, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I can't see him, but go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the first item here has got to be, we need to stop trying to castigate blame on our teachers who have been doing phenomenal amount of work for our kids and for us and on the rest of our staff as well. We need to stop doing that. We really do. Also, we need to stop trying to compare Lowell to private schools. They're not the same. We're not in the same category. You cannot compare, no, they're not.
Mike, let, uh, Andy's got the floor.
You cannot compare us to private schools. And by doing that, posting pictures of what they're doing in private schools, expecting that Lowell should be able to do the same thing is incorrect. It's not, it's not sending a good message at all. And I'm really, I'm very, I'm growing very wary of that. We need to stop doing that. Our teachers are working extremely hard at trying to make sure our kids getting the best they can get in a remote setting.
I never said they weren't working hard, Andy.
I'm not done.
Go ahead, Andy.
You can say all you want, when you have the floor.
You're talking directly to me.
I am tired of it. I don't want to hear any more negative comments about our teachers. They're hardworking, deserve our, our praise.
Yeah, Mike, just let Andy finish.
I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
On to Mike Dillon, please, and Andy.
I can't hear what's going on.
Can I respond to a few things that have been said, please?
Go, Mr. Hohwe, go ahead.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Dillon right now. Mike, you're not on the island up by yourself. They have this superintendent, get with the Department of Health and move us in a safe direction. I think the superintendent did a bang up job. So, Mike, next meeting, you can bring a motion up and you're gonna get a second by me. I'm not locked in not to put those 3% back right away and then go to 25% and work our way up right after the holidays. But you're not alone, Mike. There might be more than just four of us. A lot of, I'm gonna get the kids back in school. I think after Christmas, New Year's is over. That's only two weeks, but if it shows any type of movement down, we have to bring a motion to the floor to change the direction that we told the superintendent to go to. That's all I have to say. I know you're not against teachers, Mike. You're against unions. It's been easy for me to understand that. So, I just wanted to throw that in there. It's not all about teachers right now. It's about unions and children. That's what it's about. Thank you.
I thank, thank you. John, Mr. Dillon?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm certainly not against teachers, but I'm against the direction that the UTL is moving currently. I'm not, I have not said anything about teachers are not working hard. I get that they're working hard. Of course they are. We're all working hard right now. I'm not questioning the job that they're doing at remote learning. It's the fact that they're doing remote learning. And they're not in the building. They weren't in the building in September when the numbers were zero. And they're still not in the building. I'm not talking about most of the teaching staff. I, I've been touting this, our teaching staff since, you know, since, since I got in and prior. I know we have a good staff. It's one of the only things that's been a sure thing around the school district. They need new leadership. They're being, you know, I don't, where are all the other unions? Stick up for the teachers' union. I don't see it happening right now. I'm not calling out teachers and saying that they're not working hard enough. They're working too hard. They're doing remote. We should be in the buildings. That's what it's all about. I'm not bashing teachers. Don't listen then if you can't listen to what I'm saying. If you can't take the trip.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, just a couple of comments and then I'll let you go. So, it looks like, obviously, we want to come up with some side of a temporary timeline. But when you think we could bring back 3%, 25%, 50% if possible? Looks like we want to advocate for some more testing, maybe in-school testing. Looks like we want to take a look at the school facilities, make sure that every exterior room is either gonna be used or is being used, and it's in a safe working condition as far as windows, ventilation, having the, having the, having the air purifiers. So, we should be looking at those types of plans. And then obviously, the further we go out, what we're gonna do for next year. So, let Ms. Martin go, and then we'll go back to you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, John. What I was thinking was, perhaps, and this may be helpful for the superintendent, and, and I'd certainly ask for him to respond to it. In terms of kind of setting some, some goals, in my mind, as we have this conversation, I think what I would propose, and, and, you know, obviously, the, the committee can weigh in on it, would be if we looked at a February 1st return, and this is all projected, recognizing that numbers will dictate if we can actually do it, but saying that what our best case scenario right now is February 1st return for the sub-separates, then a March 1st return for the 25%, and then an April 1st return to get us to 50%. I think those are real, real metrics and real numbers that we can point at. And it gives us, to begin with, the month of January to try to get our ducks in a row on testing and the contract, contact tracing. I mean, I will say, I've been involved in a lot of different meetings. I, I know Joanne Belanger knows this, because she, she went through it with the, when we were on the, uh, uh, meeting of a, a number of different nonprofits that the, the mayor had convened. There's absolute recognition that more testing is needed. And I know that there is an effort underway right now to try and pull together, at least from the nonprofit perspective, all the different organizations to try to kind of rally that, that cause, to reach out to the state to try and, and push back and get the, the increased testing here in the city. So, I know that that's going on. I know that the, and, and the same is true for all of our other concerns, the contact tracing. All of these things are, are the job of state government. And as the city, we need to be pushing hard to get them to the levels we need them at in the city. So, if, based on the proposed timeline I just kind of, you know, roughly outlined, that would give us the month of January to try to do that push, so that we could get our ducks in a row, to be able to successfully look at February 1st as the beginning of our return.
Mr. Superintendent?
No, not yet. But I, I'll be happy to get there.
John, do you want to follow up with that, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, no, I can take it and reflect on it, or I can hear the, the committee's motion. Obviously, there's been different voices among the committee members, as there has been, throughout the duration, at least since the, since the surge. We did, we did have consensus among the committee with, with the initial reopening plan, which I believe we, we implemented successfully, that initial reopening plan. However, with the surge and the latest surge and the evolving data we've had, obviously, there are different, now different voices among the committee members. So, I can, whatever be the wish of the committee, I can take the information I've heard tonight, reflect on it, and provide out information to the community, or we can hear it as a motion, so I can get direct guidance from the majority.
What's the wish of the board and Ms. Martin? Do you want to make that in a form of motion that we can use that as an outline?
Yeah, I'd, I'd certainly be willing to make it as a motion, but I think it would be great to hear from my colleagues.
Why don't we just go down the, I'll go down the line. So, Ms. Clark? Oh, do we have a second on the motion for us?
Second.
Okay. So, go down the line. Ms. Clark, any thoughts on the motion?
Ms. Clark, could you hear them? I, yeah, I, I'm not even, vote on the motion, or I'm sorry?
You have any thoughts on the motion? Before we vote?
So, I like, I like what I, I'm sorry, I like what Ms. Martin about having a kind of theme out there. While I know it's very up in the air, I think it's, I think that what I also like, I think is really important is the push for coming up with plans for testing. I think prioritizing that is very important, you know, in, for January and forward. While I know it's gonna be great when we have the vaccination getting out there, I think it has to be a critical, critical piece that, you know, as a city, whatever we can do to, to make that progress that way will help get, get our committees and our staff back to keep going. Thank you.
Go, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's, yeah, it sounded pretty reasonable. Ms. Martin, could you maybe just a quick, quick summary of exactly what it was?
Oh, sure. Basically, looking at February 1st for sub-separates to return, March for, I, I, these aren't Mondays necessarily, but.
Yeah.
First for 25% to come back, and April 1st for 50% to come back.
Okay. And we're talking about, you know, this is a goal?
That's, that's the perfect way to put it, a goal that we hope we can get to, but that we need to be, you know, we need to.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's, it sounds very reasonable right from where we are right now, definitely. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Darby.
Yes, I would say I totally agree with this idea of putting out these goals for returning, because I think it helps to give our staff and the community an idea. But I think also key to what I heard Ms. Martin say, which I think should be included in that motion, is that we're gonna be looking at the testing issue. We have to be able to do testing, looking at the contract tracing issue. We're overloaded now. Hopefully, as we stop bringing more kids back, we get that contract tracing under control. Also, looking at upgrading the PPEs for those staff that are working with kids in the substantially separate program, where they're, they're not able to maintain that distance. So, and I would include the facilities in that as well. So, we set this goal of a timeline of how we're gonna bring our staff and students back. And in the meantime, around that, we're doing these other things. And I did hear that, Ms. Martin, am I accurate? That is a key, that's the key part of her motion. It's not just putting a date forward that a goal, but this actual work. And we have to put pressure on Desi and the state. If they want our kids in school, they have to give us the tools to make it safe. And that, those tools would be testing, tracing, and the proper equipment. So, I completely support that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Dakota, I skipped.
I, I, I support my colleague's motion. I think it's a great idea, as long as we're adhering to all of the things that were brought up. I think we just have to be very, very careful. Let the numbers dictate what, what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hohwe?
Yeah. The only problem I have with the motion is going all the way to February. That's a long, because we got about another two weeks that we're gonna be out of school. The Board of Health, we might be able to see between two and three weeks. And all of a sudden, we see the numbers going down. Because it's all about that 3% to get started for me. And that's all I have. February 1st is a long time. But if all my colleagues are going, on a yay vote, I, I would probably just be by myself and go on and go, just so you know how I feel. That's all.
Yep. Thank you.
If I could ask, John, before we, before we go forward, if we could get a response from, from the, the Board of Health?
Yeah, I was gonna go.
Reasonable.
Yep. Um, Joanne, Ms. Belanger, do you want to speak on that? Ms. Keegan or Ms. Belanger? Who do you want, who do you want first, Connor?
I, come on.
I can't wait to hear from both.
All right. Joanne, why don't you go first? Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, it's two Joans, so you gotta pick one. So, um, yeah, I think the timeline sounds reasonable. I, you know, I just want to caution that, you know, that we remain flexible in everything. As we saw the surge after Thanksgiving, we expect an even bigger one after the next two holidays, just because of the nature of, of what they are. And people are traveling. We've seen that repeatedly, you know, in all the newscasts, that people are not adhering or staying and staying home. They're, they're getting on planes and trains and automobiles. So, I unfortunately don't expect the numbers to get better anytime in the next couple of weeks. Although, after that, you know, in, as we hit maybe later in January, February, I, I do remain completely hopeful. But as long as everybody understands that we have to get through these holidays and the two or three weeks afterwards, as we hit the residual of, of those events, based on that, you know, I think these dates, you know, look doable. Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Keegan?
Hi, thank you. If I could just say a couple of things, I, I, you know, I think that's a reasonable goal. I think we all need to set goals. You know, we're still gonna need to obviously follow the numbers. But I think the motion is very reasonable. I, I will say that I think, given that Lowell has the highest, the second highest case rate in the state, we should be able to get some testing. we should be able to get some testing to the city. Who else needs it more than us, other than Lawrence? And, and they've certainly had a lot of state-supported testing in Lawrence. And so the Board of Health, and I think the Health Department and in the School Department, anything we can do to, to advocate for more testing in Lowell. Joanne knows I harass her all the time about getting more testing in Lowell, and I think everyone's on the same page about testing. I, I, I love the idea of what can the School Department do in terms of any more education of your families around following the mask protocols and the social distancing and, and everything, anything that that your staff can do about reminding families of that, I think would be awesome. You know, I spend a lot of time thinking about how can we convince people not to travel, to wear masks, to social distance. I, I, it just amazes me. And so any educational efforts would be awesome. So I, I do like, love that idea, Mr. Dakota. And just the third thing I would, if, if, I'm sorry, I'm like being long, but vaccination of teachers is a long way off. That's not a metric that we're gonna meet this year. I mean, if it, it's something Mr. George has mentioned about holding off on, on resuming in-person learning until our teachers are vaccinated. The teaching population who's gonna need two vaccines, three weeks or four weeks apart, depending on the vaccine, we're a long way from getting our, all of our teachers vaccinated. So that's a very separate issue. And I don't, you know, even though they're, they're in the next one B or one C group, we're a long way from that, and it's really not the metric that I think, I think it, you know, that we're looking to achieve is having all the teachers vaccinated before in-person learning resumes. I think that's a long way off, just my. That's all I have. Thank you very much for, for listening and for responding to our motion.
Thank you. All right, so we have a second on the motion, right, by Mr. Dakota? So why don't we take a roll call on the motion?
Can I say something one, one minute before you do your roll call? I had my hand up, but I don't think. I apologize for interrupting you. I just wanted to say that, you know, there was some conversation about private schools are still in school in the city. I know my daughter goes to a local Catholic school and has been out for four weeks because of cases that were found within their program. And someone had mentioned, you know, what are the thresholds that we go back on? And unfortunately, because this is a novel virus and a brand-new situation, there's really no way for us to give you any concrete information on that. And so what it will require is the community in general to work together to the greatest good for all involved, including populations of children as well as, you know, other citizens in the community. I feel a little leery about setting goals for dates to go back. I do think they're great to have them as goals. But I do think another conversation would be necessary prior to instituting that, that return. The reason why I say that is, you know, I witnessed the numbers at the hospital. I've witnessed the cases. They're, they're reopening the field hospital. And although I hear the frustration, and I know how, how challenged some of our students are at home, I really do feel like the greater community at large is facing a larger challenge that we don't completely understand and we can't completely control. And so I think that meeting together with the Board of Health may be reasonable with the understanding that we may not have precise numbers that can guarantee anything for anybody at any time, anytime soon, including vaccination numbers or, or contract tracing numbers. I mean, the exponential growth of contract tracing is is incredible. One person can lead to any number of contacts. You know, it's just, it's really staggering. And I, I think that that is gonna be something that's difficult to implement. I don't mean to sound negative or as a sort of downing anything. I just really want people to understand that we're all making the best guess with the information present to us. And that information changes weekly from, from this, you know, global level, never mind just here in the city of Lowell. So I appreciate everyone's time and patience. I hear the frustration y'all have. I'm sure you're really wrestling with the right things to do, but I would request that we have another meeting prior to the restart of any students in the school, if that's at all formidable to the board. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, and I'd add that to the motion, that we schedule a date, probably in January to, you know, connect before we make any final plans to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Mary's done typing, we'll roll call, roll call.
Before we do that, I'll make sure I have clarity, because I guess send a message out to the full community here tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm hearing no sooner than February one for our sub-separate population pending another follow-up meeting with the Board of Health during the month of January. Subsequent to that, the twenty-five percent would not return until March one. Again, pending follow-up continuous conversations with the Board of Health. And then an expansion beyond the twenty-five percent would not occur any sooner than April one. Am I hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. All pending, so it's no sooner than not on this date, all pending continued collaboration with the Board of Health and monitoring the local COVID-19 data. Understood. I have clarity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Do you want to hear the motion after it was rewritten? Wasn't there an amendment to it?
Well, just to go over the dates of the February, March, and April, so three percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, set up a meeting again, probably a second second meeting of January to, to touch base again with the Board of Health. So that was the.
And that will spend the month of January doing, you know, advocating for increased testing, increased contact tracing, and, and review of PPE and school buildings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just have a question. I mean, I, and Joel, the way, Dr. Boyd, the way that you interpreted is that not before these dates? I don't know, Ms. Martin, like, are we look, I don't necessarily want to say that we're not gonna do anything before that time. I, I, we're talking about it as like a goal. I don't want to say, I mean, if in a month, you know, Lowell's in amazing shape. I don't want to certainly limit us in any way, right? I don't think we're talking.
Yeah, I think we're setting these each as goals. So it's a February, March, and April goal, and that whether, whether it's looking really good or looking really bad, we need to be able to, to flex our decision based on the facts on the ground.
Yeah, I just didn't, Dr. Boyd kind of was making it sound, when he fed it back to us, it kind of sounded more like he saying we're, we're telling them we will not be doing this until this date, and, you know, I don't know.
Right, we're gonna be flexible with it.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's what I was, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Please continue, Mayor.
So Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Mr. Superintendent, any, anything else?
I'll get that, I will get that communication out to the community tomorrow. So thank you. Appreciate the guidance, Committee.
Anything else that you wanted to add before we adjourn, though?
I, I do understand the passion that surrounds this, and I understand, and I really appreciate the Board of Health coming to the table to help the committee and the administration wrestle with what is less than a hundred percent clarity coming from the state. So when the guidance doesn't come from the state level, it's, it's, it's nice to know that we have experts locally that can help the committee with some further clarity around the guidance. And Committee members, I appreciate the conversation here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe and Ms. Belanger. Mr. Dillon, did you have something to add?
I was just saying thank you to the Board of the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Need a.
Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Move to adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
Suck it.
Yep, motion adjourned by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. All right, thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Stay safe.